All right, good evening. I'll call the nation where at six o'clock. Uh, we'll begin with the. For sort of this to approve the agenda. Couple of conditions, um, we need to add a resignation, um, to the set agenda. Everyone should have received that this afternoon. Um, it's for. First. Brand stuff last weekend. Um, so. Just add resignation to the. That the end of. And then.
Could we also add a brief discussion around teacher appreciation? And could we also have an executive session for personnel around contract recommendations?
Okay, so we can add teacher appreciation to do business. And so you had some questions about that contract recommendation?
Yes.
All right, so we'll, we'll move that out of the consent agenda. Um, you know that. Have that on the agenda. Probably after doing business. Okay. All right, any other changes to the agenda? All right, all those in favor say aye. Oh wait, I'm sorry, is there a motion? That the agenda with those changes?
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion by Amanda. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mary's. Uh, public comments, um, does anyone want to speak tonight? Yeah.
I want to get close to speed, I don't know last time. So I'm getting home, I'm sure I'm very not. I'm, I wear any hats, so tonight I'm here on behalf of the Modern Woodman in America. Um, thanks for to the school here. Um, a couple of things. A while ago, I think before Chris, in the super, when we had the active superintendent. And Wells Springs was formed, we were having some discussion with legal matters about changing our leases and all that. To be working with the town, the Woodman, and the school because we have to change all the work we are trying to get on one dock. I think this is state seven dollar after decade. Are you guys, are they working down here ever since the last superintendent, the acting superintendent left? Or the last, now that I'm on the spot, or I can follow on the town side too. As far as the Woodman's lawyer was saying, the town, or against on the town sand, the Woodman, are you guys, is there any knowledge you guys are aware of?
So I'm going to project the JFAC, the attorney, the representative of the board, and you shared at least reading the word.
Lovely.
The documents and items from the town.
From the town, okay. Okay, so I will try to figure out where we are. It's like this point, this point, this point, and nobody's doing anything, so, because we want to work on trying to get that transitioned over into the Wells Springs and stuff, and just, uh, no, just, wouldn't want to reinforce to you guys, um, as you know, um, the Woodman has always maintained part of. You guys have used the part a lot for decades, years, hundreds of years. Um, right before COVID actually launched, we spent over 150 grand, we paid just part of five. Um, the, as you can tell, the last few years, the block top right up front here is taking the beat. And mainly, it's on the buses, the buses come in every day, twice a day, sitting there, running, whatever, and all the path for the school. We're which basically, but all you see in most of the mess is where you can do all this. We've never asked you guys for anything, um, in the past, but we're starting to get very expensive. In trying to repair out front here, um, we're great now, we can whole patch the monster poles we had out here. Um, we're trying to talk to different people, trying to get ideas if we should cut them out. And probably fix them, which eventually whether we do it now or later, it needs to be done, it's branding down, anything you got, whatever. Um, we got open phone so far to come up, fix it properly, for about $22,000. Now, to keep out of the summer, we're gonna spend more $15,000 plowing, sanding this part a lot this year, easily. You guys got enough from that, eventually, um, so, if, just so you know, um, and I'm hoping we can get everything together in these leases. We might start having to ask for something, um, for the use of this to help with those type of repairs. Um, as I've been coming forward, the end of this year, um, I would like to make a suggestion. If I change you guys have like surplus, a nice donation might be nice to Woodman, to help offset some of these costs of, um, the fears that we're having to endure. For that, um, but just so you also know, it is on the document for this spring, we are going to that task report that we know this community and school uses to make a test for everything the law for. Um, and we have been keeping up with the basket for, you know, fixing the cracks and putting in the, um, that's and all that, so, you know, I think there's just a lot of this community, a lot of the school, it's just. I think after a hundred years, you need to ask for, you know, hey, guys are really using that throughout the way a lot, and it's really big. And we might need to also, I haven't talked to people, might have to schedule a lot of odd days to park this time, even if because we've had slips and falls on there that we're now having to plan planes for that are on this side of the park lot, but we didn't necessarily see them, we're getting there, but we want to meet this department in the morning. See anything, always do it there, so we might have to help us schedule the two people work for. Um, you know, we should completely pay you to ask me, but you know, I think if you guys are able to deal with it, we're appreciated this year. Um, if you're able to move forward in the year, I know how your budget is and all that, but you know, also catch me in circles, so. Um, but I will work with the lawyers too and be sure to, who should I contact, be in touch and deal with anything.
So just to clarify, I just got an email, so we are waiting, uh, we're in JFAC, we're still waiting on maintaining a deep for town exposure. Mr. Potters, Grant, and the chair, and say, you're stuck, John, we're actually, you can push your eyes here, that's.
You try to get one of the D.
D, yes, uh, D, uh, town, school, our last grant. I can email.
Yeah, that'd be great, I mean, there's. Going back. This is don't have any new. That's why the warrant just came, I had a hold on my student, I saw that. Uh, but yeah, so we'll all try to, maybe we have a little bit of room. Or is it, it's going, um, because it, it should be done, to make it all current, this.
Eighty-one, eighty-five, I remember small, be great.
Well, I live on the slow board, I come from school side, or I was down side, and I'm on the, 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 so I just. So, um, we will definitely work on that, so.
There's a better conclusion, I'm not sure if Tyson would believe, but I know we're trying to secure debris duty easements too. Um, because we have, um, uh, with, with the use of the subject, and feel we had easements in place for that, I think that was something that, um.
So that was something, if I remember right, this, the active superintendent wanted to try to get something of writing, whatever. I don't think there ever has been, he's been, he just, it always would time to be mentioned, whatever. There's never been any, 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 you guys pretty much have every rating, it's building important, soccer real, we're good with that, we have no issues. Um, so I only think, the Woodman felt that the school's trying to do a little bit more technical, file control over our grounds, and I can tell you, if you do that, you're going to grow the wood some, which never worked. Because we don't want that, this is a community thing, we want to know what you think. Um, but, you know, I do appreciate you coming and saying, hey, we have our title of the beach, never doubt, you know, we always know, we've got to do it, but it's always the party is to ask. Soccer, we always look our teachers over, we are all for this school, and all for, you know, we, we have the normal problem of that. I think, yeah, it has something to do with where it lies and stuff, we've always fixed it, we got a issue with it, we fixed it. Um, the only thing I know is like, it was like, right away, you know, like a few partner spots out here, which is a lot of talk about, I think it's from the beginning of the, the road, maybe down this way, like, kids are similar. Is what I guess, something with the water, let's say. So, you know, and the way the whole drawing goes, you can, it's leasing of this property, it's kind of looks like it almost goes happening to the tax board. It, it's a mess though, I mean, you know how things work, it's, that's why we're just like, okay, we need to start off here, try to be a lot of that. But yeah, the town leases priority, and the Woodman leases it from the town, and then we subleased part of it to you guys. But, I mean, we've never had any issues.
No.
We tried to do everything, either in full, big push, or that tax board, you know, beautiful, I was wanting to get pissed, but it is a function. Hey, we're about the community, that's being used, we need to get some. Um, because that's what they're all about, so, and especially just pick a lot, you know, I mean, huge, and there's, I guess, group in town wants to start, you know, using it, and that's why, you know, um, that's good, with those extra markets, and what we're doing, and stuff, but as you know, that's not going to be changed to either um, to concrete, everything, so. So I just wanted to give you guys a heads up, if it helps at all, and if you need a letter or something to be to find, or have this friends or friends, or whatever, they just, uh, reach out to us. That's it, all right?
Thank you.
That's one matter, that's.
Okay, uh, is there any other public comment? And, oh yeah, um, I think there's, I think two people are having some issue with audio, seeing, um. Can, can anyone, can everyone hear me?
It's really echoey, Eric, and it keeps cutting out on my end, I left and came back, but it's definitely a little touchy tonight.
Okay, I'm not sure if it's microphone issue, or.
We can hear you, Eric, very well, but when Tammy was speaking, it was very wobbly.
Like two plus people, the client.
I just think it's, I want to say the farther the microphones get away, I don't know, but I, I would say that if it's not to speak loud or clearly, maybe we'll see if that, that helps.
And you have one other question, sorry.
Okay. Step closer, Eric.
I just have a question regarding how this works in your meeting, so, public comments, I come, I can break your questions, pal, whatever, you guys will discuss them later, or whatever, you come back, that means the next meeting, is that how that works?
Yeah.
Okay, and what if there's something on the agenda, and I might not have a question until after you get to that agenda, and does that have to come to the next meeting? How does that work? So you don't have to, I'm over, I'm, yeah, either.
Yeah, that's something which we're going to address across the agenda, we're looking at, if public comment began also, some public comment.
I think that'd be a good idea, yeah.
Maybe that's, that's, talking to, about that F B, consistency, it draws a lot of great words.
That's what makes sense, because it's like, it's not a question, I don't have a question, a lot of areas I hear, because of my agenda, but it might be something on agenda, but you don't do that to that.
We already have two public comment sections for community engagement, so. So initially on the, on the community engagement agenda, and with, with like our regular meeting agenda, my concern has just been like the long meeting.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, yeah, and then, so I mean, that's something that, uh, if, if there were additional questions or concerns, then, you know, I could always just reach out with the, with self superintendent, probably. But, uh.
You mean, during the meeting, or after?
After the meeting, something.
It just makes it sometimes if you're discussing the topic that I be able to have a question, something that one half, that, that, but make it, you know, or pull it up, read comments or something, help me should, others. That's just my thought, because I'm like, I'm, it's like a par for the course sometimes, sometimes people come to me based on gender, it's been, yes, I was recording your agenda, like. So, that was all, my two cents, I'll take you back.
No, appreciate it, appreciate you, thank you. Okay, Heather?
Hi, um, I'm, 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 uh, here today to raise some concern about, uh, how some of the agenda items are being prioritized. Think that there's been an ongoing discussion for well over a year, uh, out and out, in middle springs. And it was supposed to be on the agenda tonight, it was, it's not on the agenda, but we've also just recently made an accommodation for an item, like out of the blue, and I'm wondering like why certain agenda items are being prioritized over others, and if you could please address that.
Okay, well, the outdoor school, house, or classroom, um, I, I haven't received any information that, that pertains to that, so that's why it's not on the agenda. Um, you know, um, the board had decided, um, on how to move forward with this, and we're still waiting for information. Uh, this afternoon, I did receive an email about having it on the agenda, but the agenda is, is prepared like the week before. And that's why it's on the agenda, and, uh, so, you know, I hope that answered your question.
It didn't really.
I think, Heather, the question I think you're asking is, why an org member can add an item to the agenda, and to begin with, why a member of the following can't? Uh, so, a member of the following, they want to add an item to the agenda, needs to reach out to myself, to the board chair, or prior. But at an org meeting, an org member can add items for discussion, but that's part of their responsibility, a member of the following can't at the last.
Right, and there's an, I hope that you'll address Mary's hand. Um, there's been an ongoing discussion for well over a year about this project, and there's absolutely no reason why it wasn't on the agenda already tonight. And it wasn't afternoon that Eric received communication about this for the first time. So to me, it's very concerning that certain topics that aren't like priorities for the board, it appears, are dismissed. Um, while others are elevated on the top of the conversation.
Okay. I understand your concern. Is that all you have, Heather?
Yes.
Uh, Mary Ben?
Hey, guys, yeah, I just wanted to echo that, um, sentiment, I, you know, uh, me and Eric have been, um, in conversation back and forth um, on email, um, since I've kind of taken like a little bit of the lead, um, from Ashley, um, just because she needed help, honestly. Um, so, yeah, I was a little disappointed that we weren't on the agenda, I did send Eric an email this morning. Um, you know, which is obviously later than I would have wanted, but we just got the new drawings back from Michael and Luke, uh, who did a ton of work over the last month, um, that, maybe that, um, if I sent him the latest drawings this morning, he could distribute it to the, to the board, and then you guys would have some time, um, to look over it, um. So, yeah, I guess I'm a little disappointed as well, um, we're just moving, you know, month by month and not, you know, day by day for this, so. Um, you know, this is only the first step that we would need, um, in order to get the okay, um, from the board. Um, and then, you know, going forward, you know, with funding, um, is a, is a concern as well, but, um, yeah, so just, I, I just wanted to let everybody know that you know, I have been in communication with Eric about the specific concerns and requirements the board is looking for, for this next meeting. So we really have been working towards that common goal, um, so, yeah, so hopefully we can, um, you know, reconvene um, and have that, um, on the agenda for sure in May.
Yep, um, yeah, and, and I, I got an email from Ashlyn too, and responded. Okay, um, all right, so thank you for that, uh. Yeah.
Why wouldn't you just look that up, her own business, if you don't have any updates, you just skip over it, or do you have it on there that, so it's not forgotten about, that it is still one? Typically, it'll be, it's just, you still have it on the agenda for it all to resolve, any topic.
Yeah.
And if you have no further information, then you say, you know, if you have no further information on this, so, just a suggestion.
Right, well. Well, I gotta get into it, but there's, there's there's reasons why it's not on the agenda, it's primarily just, mainly because of the, the information for board to review. But, uh, all right, so we're gonna move on to, uh, consent agenda. So we have minutes, uh, March eighth, uh, and warrants, uh, two seventy-five, two seventy-seven, two seventy-nine. And then also the resignation, um, we'll be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Well, I just have a comment on the minutes, uh, on page five, where we were signing, where you run the county subcommittee members, it says negotiation committee. For instance, two members, and then we list one. Is that correct?
I, I thought I was still on that committee, but I'm not, I also saw.
Did Sue join that committee?
Sue, Sue is the one member listed.
Yeah, it's, it's supposed to, yeah, it's supposed to be the two, so, Meredith, so, yeah. Just need to, to add her, thank you. All right. Other than that, I'll make the motion. All right, my George, uh, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
March carries. Superintendent.
Uh, thank you. I do a few items to review, uh, some of this information is incredible, uh, just going back up to the legislative updates. Uh, there's not a lot of time before it gets done, uh, so I, what you have for you is that still the ratio for the crossover. Uh, then there are some updated deadlines, and some, uh, items have moved from, say, the House, the Senate. Um, but we're looking at, uh, you know, as I can see more information about us, to the age forty-three, whether you're a school mill, or a PCB, I don't, uh, you know, form the board as of that, but uh, this is, you know, we're still waiting on updates, so, just talking, etc. Uh, the Yagawa Midcap Assessment Window opens up, or actually opens up today, uh, with Ricky Carroll, we talked a little about the testing window, and what that may look like. I know that Lisa Madison, the assistant superintendent in charge of assessment, instructor career, who sent out a message to staff and families, kind of give an overview what, uh, this is like a couple of little bit of this transition, so, uh, I'll leave Ricky, Carroll, talk a little more about that, what they may look like in terms of schools. Um, Ricky, uh, Bill, Carroll, Justin, myself, Lisa Madison, who did participate in the University of Washington Center for Education Leadership. Uh, instructional leadership gathering this past year, uh, you know, and, uh, this is a great program designed around, program, you know, on instructional leader. And it really was meant to improve quality of feedback, that's great for Carroll providing to staff, from all of his, from all of his, uh, forums, uh, instruction, and the classroom, and this year on student learning. Uh, this was actually year two of this program, uh, last year Ricky wasn't able to join, and then this, uh, Carol's first year, uh, was maybe joining on the second, uh, or this year. We are looking at what year two would look like for Richard Carroll last year in a different format, but it's something which the whole GRSSU administrative team participates in. It's a greater program, and it has a much, I have to talk to Ricky Carroll about their experience, but it has been a great, uh, big year for us. Uh, well, so, I hear, uh, summer programming, Richard Carroll, we'll talk a little more about that tonight, uh, what we're looking at, we have, uh, again, some of the fine, uh, what our summers will go back to our schools, what offerings we will have, um, and then, uh, two, two more items, we made strategic planning. We held our last design team meeting, uh, Monday, the tenth, and what that last meeting was intended to do was, uh, give the design team, which consists of board members, administrators, staff members, parents, caregivers, one last opportunity to provide feedback or responses on our draft plan. We then are going to take that draft plan, and continue working on that, and our goal would be to present this to the GRSSU board, June sixth, four P. And then, you know, then the S U board grows with the, of advertisements, or they send it back to, uh, team to team, work on that, for if you improve, uh, the June sixteen, we'll wait and see. We are looking to roll this out to families in August of, uh, you know, right, right, start of twenty-three, twenty-four school year, uh, so we will have this. We did look at the timing, and we did nothing inside, we'll just roll this out in July, uh, just to surprise, it's a busy month for everyone, it's, uh, right about start of school year, when people start to think about what this may look like, and, uh, what this really means, but we are, we're doing a lot of work around that, well, more information, S C P, so. Uh, and then, just a reminder, uh, around the April fourth, uh, GRSSU board meeting, uh, board did go to recruit to waves nowadays, we hope students and staff. So our last day of school, we're managed June sixteen, uh, for, for everyone, and then graduation dates happen, set. Middletown Springs, graduation will be on June fifteenth at six P M, and Wellsville's, uh, school undergraduate June sixteen at six P M. Got any questions?
Any questions? From board members? All right. Do you want to give, uh, principal retorts?
Uh, can you hear me? Just wanted to make sure it comes on, make sure I'm speaking a lot of that, um, first, it's a pleasure to be here tonight, I want to thank the staff who worked so hard, like, last, well, we've been working hard all year using the, the daily map and fast finish testing, use that information for structural, uh, for what the kids are learning, and, uh, I can't give enough credit to the hard work they do. Uh, I want to share that we, through the Ware Grant, um, we had some wonderful alter, these one is a week long, private magician residency, we had students. Uh, all the students had a session with our market magician, and we had a final performance where we had community members, parents come in to see it. Uh, a lot of research about the benefits of students having this type of private residency, and confidence, uh, um, self-confidence, uh, has math skills. It was just a great opportunity for students, and it's amazing to see how the kids come up and perform their magic, it is a amazing opportunity. Something else to, uh, the Ware Grant is Up and Learning, um, we had a, uh, staff from Up and Learning come in, we worked with the fourth to sixth graders, worked, looking at school climate data, uh, developing action plans to address, then by needs, some of the needs are, um, looking at restoring practice plans, or restoring reporting sheet, uh, had a group working on that, gave presentations to other students, they had input, it was just a fun experience. We had a one group looking at the celebrations, to celebrate what's happening, the good things that are happening at the school. We had a group looking at, uh, what to be done to help create that school learning environment that helps the future, provide structure to all, and those really rich conversations that that, uh, that we want us to be involved in problem solving and, uh, how to, I can't say enough, good things about it. Um, we are continuing our work in the M T S, we be, equally, looking at data, um, progress, and hearing right now, studying our map, fast roads testing. Um, and the, uh, state has podium, which I do have a plan, right? So it's a pretty wide open window this year, which is nice, to be able to stress that, to stretch it out, so we're not using the, the one thing, to try to crank it all in. And once again, it's using that information of the test to refer back, and you make plans, so, evaluate what we've done this year, and then make plans for next year. I do want to share that, uh, we're changing our grade preparation for next year in Middletown Springs. I do want to share that, uh, we're changing our grade preparation for next year at Middletown Springs, we have straight kindergarten, straight first, straight second, and a combined third, and fourth, and fifth and sixth. Um, part of the process we're doing right now is, um, working on planning instructional practices for both of the combined grades and, uh, I can just say. An excellent preparation for next year, look at the strike of our teachers here, I think it's class specific. And, uh. That's kind of it. I'm too much here. We do have a Washington program coming off of Girls in the Month, which is, uh, like, both programs, I can't say enough good things, but, but it's pride for us to have. Visual collaborator at Wells, too, but I'm sharing some trips, some of the events.
Any questions for Rick? Carol?
Hi, um, I just wanted to, along with everything else that I shared in the report, but also that today. Was the first faculty meeting that we shared with Middletown to make professional development with two matters, training us for scientific invention. And I feel like it goes in really great experience for our staffs to be together, to kind of show them that we really can and should be working together. And it was also financially a good move as well, that we could combine and probably get more PD for our faculties based on the fact that we really kind of. Talk together as staffs, and it wasn't that much for us to drive towards, like, nobody really wanted. Um, just want to reiterate what Chris said about the, the experience at the Center for Educational Leadership this year. For me, it's probably in my many decades, uh, probably the best professional development I could have. It was so. Every time we went, there was something new, and it was very useful, and it just provided. A lot of legal input that I think has really benefited me in providing the teacher feedback, so. Uh, I'm actually looking forward to it, we'll get to it again next year. Uh, Wells also does participate, you know, talking around in the last thing, just to add a quick, we probably will be getting together. Uh, we did start our taught day testing today because some of the teachers didn't want to wait till after break to have to do all of reset the tests. And I'm kind of glad that we did, and we may have some information that will help out Middletown and some of the other schools. We did have some glitches, um, all of our Chromebooks was updated with the software that we love to need it. Oddly enough, in each of the rooms, there were four Chromebooks every time that could not log into the system. And it didn't matter what we did, we called the company, they tried to help us out, so our tech people are helping us. So certain Chromebooks were accepting it, and we just had to separate our kids in time. So it was, it was just a little bit off. Um, so, and then we, I have been talking with Angie James, who is. And helps with summer programming, we are planning on, I'm planning on us doing four weeks of four days. Um, I had talked to Rick about us getting together potentially to do some field trips together so that we're saving the money. Uh, it was really nice to get our firm to school meeting, and Ashley Bearetti actually said that she would come bi-weekly to our summer school programs because our kids really love. What she does with them, so I think that's pretty exciting to think about, that, that she's willing to extend it into summer. We did set our fifth and sixth grade trip, we decided this year we're doing a one-day trip for Vermont, and it will be on May twenty-sixth. Um, and we also have Marco Magician coming for his artist residency meeting. Um, from the twenty-fourth to the twenty-eighth, when we get back, and I, final student performance and his performance will be Friday at one forty-five, and I would welcome any of you to come because I. Rick hasn't had anything but great things to say about it, so we're pretty excited about the five. What was the date again? It's the twenty, it'll be the twenty-eighth, that Friday, April, yeah, at one forty-five. And the kids will do a performance, and then he does the final performance. Do you think that's it?
And just for Middletown Springs, we've got about some programs, so we'll be doing a four-day, three-day program, somewhat like we used to have, um, no, caution, this is a. Which I think is a perfect, uh, eight o'clock, three o'clock, and, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and I think it's gonna be a great program, and. Um, just to keep up those, that kind of skills and, uh, provide a good experience for students. That'll be the next one, four weeks, I think.
Any other questions for, uh, the principals? I'll move on, um, Meredith?
Um, yeah, I should have asked, uh, Rick, but I was wondering about, um, what our student count is at Middletown. I noticed, um, Carol had her student countdown. Do we know Middletown's?
So we're approximately seventy students at this point. And cheating about that for next year.
Thanks.
Carol, push time?
We're still looking at our pre-k numbers, but we have eleven sixth graders, so.
Okay. Alright, uh, so, I just have a few things, uh, under chair of the board, uh, first, Henderson Fund, uh, the, uh. The Strategic Committee for the Henderson Fund met and have awarded a scholarship for, uh, two individuals from Middletown Springs. Uh, first is Anna Mathewson, and the other is Ellis Spurling. Um, the customers of public monies, uh, determined that they will receive five hundred dollars, so congratulations to both of that. Uh, the other thing is, is your packet is a, uh, like a, a public comment, expectation of public comment. I just want to share this with everyone, it's something that, you know, I wrote on last year, or something like that, but, um, it, uh, it just kind of outlines the expectations for public comments, and, uh. And so that, uh, uh. If anyone had any questions or concerns about that, let them know, and, you know, they're reasonable expectations. Uh, another thing around the supervisory union, uh, at our last meeting, uh, they have decided to, uh. I guess, uh, have an alternate for the policy committee, something that had not been previously done. And so, uh, wanted to ask if someone wanted to be an alternate for the policy committee, uh, you know, should have someone be able to attend. Right now, it's myself and, uh, Amanda on the policy, the GRCSU policy committee. Um, so. You'll dig it, yeah. If you change your mind, let me.
I can do it. I think I didn't take any of the extra committees at reorganization, so I can be the alternate.
Okay. Eric, do we have the option to just leave it general, like any other, so, do we have to name? Uh, I prefer to name some one, uh, I think that's what we kind of talked about last, last week. I think they, uh. It makes more sense to have, uh, so we can familiarize ourselves with the materials, the policy committee. Um, but, you know, having said that, you know, anyone can attend these meetings as well, you know. I think it just when it comes down to being a member of the committee, a better. You did it.
This isn't necessarily about the policy committee, um, but, uh, as a person who has gone, uh. As an alternate representative of the Grixu Committee, I wasn't getting all of the materials for the meeting. Um, is that something I no longer get because I'm not a designated, um, member? That would be like a, Chris?
I'll look into that, Meredith, okay?
Yeah, it would, it would be helpful because I'd like to be able to be there in the public anyways, but if I have the materials, it's a lot easier, especially if I have to. Come and, uh, be there for someone else.
So Meredith, it will be just what we can do now, and I'll talk to Christine, make sure that all, uh, even if it's all type of cheap materials, because maybe last day. You know, let you step in, so you should have the material, so I'll make sure you're on, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, I think you're right, the, those who are, for, the representatives would normally get the materials. Uh, and if you were just filling in, then someone would have to send it to you, I know that's what happens, so. Alright, so Cara, um. Perfect, alright, Cara, fill in as our policy committee alternate, and, uh, you know, just so you know, um. We, you, you work out of the Google Drive for the policy committee, so for you. Okay, that's all I had, um, and then. Finance, uh. See here, um, see Lewis's here, it did have a couple of questions on finance. Uh. I did notice that, uh, we had, um. At our February meeting, we had a forecast. And, um, under, uh, the plant operations. Uh, the, the forecast for the maintenance lines, um. Uh, weren't, uh, didn't show any, uh. Any actual, uh.
Expenditures?
Yeah, expenditures. And then on page nine of, uh. Yeah, uh, on page nine. The expenditures we got, um, for tonight, uh, there's a huge difference. But, uh, like, how did we go from not having this as forecast to, to being basically overspent on some margins?
Eric, I caught all of that except for the actual line you're referring to.
For repairs, uh, Well Springs repairs, Middletown Springs, and, and then Wells.
Okay, so, um, so for the, for the repairs, there's three wells, Middletown and Well Springs. And I had, about a month ago, there was, uh, a lot of repairs that were being. Coded to the Well Springs line instead of one of, instead of the Middletown and the Wells line. So there was a reconciliation done, uh, about, I would say, a few weeks ago, a month ago, to move the expenses to the appropriate line. And the only things that should be hitting the Well Springs lines are things that were agreed to as a board or by the administrators that they would go to the Well Springs line. So like, for example, the Middletown project to, for the, um, painting. That was clearly not an expense that could fit into their repairs line, that, and that was agreed that that was going to come out of the Well Springs line. Um, but there was other things, like small things, that just a routine maintenance, that were going to that Well Springs line, that needed to be moved to the Middletown and the Wells lines.
Oh, well, I just. I know we've had, uh, a lot of expenditures throughout the whole school year, so, uh, I don't know, I just. It's just something that I noticed, um, when we started talking about, uh. Other, other expenditures that are coming up for, for the maintenance.
I mean, I know there's been a lot of repairs lately, and come, when we come to the end of the year, I'll be providing an updated forecast at the next meeting. But the thing that we're gonna have to do is look at the, the forecast, and then look at those repairs lines and decide, do we want to move any of those repairs to the capital maintenance fund? Rather than the local budget. If we're running a surplus, we may not want to move them. If we're, if we're pretty close or running a deficit, then we may want to move some of those larger projects to the capital maintenance fund.
Okay. Wasn't the, the, the Well Springs line, isn't that a capital maintenance fund?
No, the Well Springs line is just a budget line. It's an extra thirty-five thousand dollars that the board decided to put in there. It, for the two schools to split. And that was done last, um, I think last year was the first year that that was done. The capital maintenance fund does not show up on you. That is a separate fund that carries over from year to year. That Well Spring thirty-five thousand does not carry over, I mean, the budget carries over, but the balance, unspent balances and carry over.
Okay, I, I just wondered, maybe I'm confusing that, for the capital, is there a fund that we had a surplus in year before?
Uh, I mean, perhaps, but, so the capital maintenance fund is not showing up on that report. That would be separate, and I could report on those balances at the next meeting if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, I think I think, uh, trying to understand, uh, some of this, I mean, usually when we, we see it in forecasts, um, uh, the numbers are. You know, they're, they're pretty reflective of what's going on, and, and, uh, but, okay, that, that's all I know, man.
So I believe at the time that, that the time that, as we've done, I mean, I was just anticipating the full budget being spent. Uh, at, we're, at this time, I think we're over budget. There's been a lot of expenditures through control technologies. Um, as well as the, the, the Middletown repair project, the paint project, and, and those large projects are gonna, I think, potentially throw us over budget.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. But I, I will provide for the, for the next board meeting an updated forecast, that'll be in the packet.
Alright, I appreciate it. Alright, uh, did anyone else have questions on the, uh, finance?
Again, a, a general question, Louis, in terms of, um. The ask today about, uh, Woodman, looking for a donation, um, that. That's something we can do, or?
I mean, typically, schools don't give donations, they get donations, but I mean, if that's something that the board, um, would like to do, then the board would just have to make that motion and decide to do that.
Yes. Did, did you, did you hear, uh, were you on previous for public talk? Uh, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, it's something we can talk about, especially if it must be sealed, like. Drivers and surplus or anything like that.
Okay.
Louis, obviously. He's got, I can, very.
That's good.
Alright, uh, alright, uh. For our old business, uh, okay, so, board retreat is a date, uh, I didn't hear back from everyone on date. So, back at, where we're on, I guess, but the first thing I, you know, uh, as far as, uh, like a board retreat goes. Uh, you know, how does the board feel about having a retreat, I guess? I'm not sure if, uh. Or I'll just, I'll just say, I think we should, but, um, I think also trying to set a date. Before school gets out, probably isn't gonna happen. So, probably left with doing it sometime in the summer, if we choose to do it, so, uh.
Some, some for a retreat. Is the board opposed to student retreats part of the very routine nights?
Yeah, was my next question. I, I, I don't think anyone's opposed to, to having a retreat. But, uh.
Did you send out a questionnaire about the date?
Yeah, I sent out an email. You know, just asking, you know, about potentially having, uh, you know, basically having a retreat. Like with a, with a regular meeting, but just kind of like have a short meeting. That way we can do it all in one evening, uh, instead of, uh.
My preference would be to have a separate, just like this space line to. Potentially after a long board meeting, we can do a short, be a little bit broader.
Yeah, we did something similar years ago when I first got on, it was just a quick, you know, meeting, we were just. Just a regular business, minutes. More and stuff like that, and then we continued on with the facilitation of the retreat and. You know, well, it's not everything we asked to be. But, yeah, so what does everyone think about regards to a retreat?
We'd probably be looking in July or August.
I say let's just pick a date and go for it and. Third Wednesday of July, what date's that? Does that date work? I think we just need to throw a number at it.
Well, what are your thoughts on, on basically coupling the retreat with a regular, with our regular board meeting?
I think that can be sticky. I think depending on what we have going on in the month, it could work or it could not, but without really knowing what July looks like, I don't know that we can reasonably say that we can get away with a quick meeting and get it done in one night. So I don't, I'm not opposed to saying that we do it in the same night, but I just don't think we can comfortably say that July will potentially be able to be a quick meeting either. I don't know.
Okay. When we'd be looking at starting the budget, sorry, the next round? July, August?
I mean, I think we'll probably start discussions, maybe August, then we start looking at the first draft. Probably September, October.
Thank you. Would it be possible then to do it in July in lieu of a regular?
Yeah. Last summer. It'd be nice to. Alright, so. And I would imagine that if something did come up, that would be more interesting, except for, yeah. Alright, we do that in July in lieu of. Alright, for a regular meeting, so a regular meeting is on July. 11th, 12th. Okay, so what time? Regular time, 6:00 AM? I'm thinking if we're doing a retreat. It's not going to be longer than two hours. If that, I mean, that's generally what we've done in the past, but.
Six works for me, if it works for everyone else.
Alright, does that, does it? That sound okay to everyone? July 12th?
Instead of our regular board meeting? Yeah.
Okay, sounds good to me. And then the other question I think we need to up with as far as what we want to accomplish during this retreat. We met last, last summer. I think we got as far as setting priorities. Do we want to start over? Do we want to just pick up from that? Think in terms of what we want to accomplish and facilitation are. Are important.
I would say we pick up where we left off and make ways to achieve those goals because we set them, but they weren't acted upon, a lot of them, so. I would say we pick up where we left off and make our next steps, ways to achieve those goals. And take it from there, and if there's things that need to be added, we add them. Just my own personal opinion.
Alright. That sounds good. I mean, just trying to get an idea of what we want to accomplish. We can go over there. Alright, so.
And are we having the same moderator or a different moderator? I personally really loved the moderator that we had when we did it in Middletown. I don't know if she is still available, but I feel like she was really well organized and we, we got a lot out of that retreat. I don't know if that is an option, but if we were having a moderator, I would suggest we try to get her.
I agree. I think Kathy does a great job, so. Did anyone have any opposite feelings about Kathy? Do the facilitation.
She did a fine job last.
Okay. Alright, that's all I needed to know. Sounds good. So at least we have a plan. Place for the retreat.
Amanda?
Are we doing like potluck again as well? Should we all plan to bring a dish and hang for a couple hours? Or not do that and just be there for a couple hours and get it out of the way? I know we had the first one catered and then last one was potluck and this one can be no food or food. I just don't know if we want to get that figured out too.
I'm fine with that. I mean, if it's, if it's going to be later, I'm not sure if those would, or you can have time to. I'm fine either way. Think.
I think it's got a different vibe, there's food involved, so it'd be for bringing food, doesn't have to be like dinner, but maybe like, like snacks.
Yeah. Yeah, because if we think about it, if we have to start up later. You can always eat before. But, I don't know, it makes for a good conversation. So.
Just do desserts.
What I'll do is, I'll do whatever did last year, I'll just send out a spreadsheet, everyone.
Yeah, I mean, nice to share.
Alright. Alright, thanks everyone. Alright. Next is the map updates, next steps.
So, I think I can kind of speak, I'll start with Brooke and I, but. We both really feel like MTSSS has been a great thing and when we look at what we've been able to do with our data, I figure probably there is a lot of different things we do that, and I figure blockchain might be the easiest way to simplify it. So, when we look at the data, we look at it as a building. But we also look at it as a GRCSU, and we have, you got a report provided too, we have reports provided to us. We talk about it in an admin and we talk about it as groups when we go to various GRCSU events. But as far as the building is concerned. Do you want me to do the faculty card?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, and I know, and I said, if they can't have it, I can send it to.
We'll send it off to shares.
Okay. So in the, at the building level, we first take it to our faculty. We have a full faculty meeting where that is what we discuss. We talk about, you know, potential trends that are happening. We look at, you know, areas of weakness, areas of strength, and the staff can look at every student in the building and know exactly what's going on. So I think that's really helpful. We then will determine or potentially pick a school life goal. For example, I know a lot of my teachers are working on math back, let's see, that was one that stood out to us, and so that has been a focus this year, and that came from our testing data, this is an area of weakness. Yeah, then, and then the teachers will take the data and they'll look at their individual class. They'll determine instructional strategies for groups or individual students. Or if they see a greater need, they'll contact EST. Most times it's just for a particular student, so they'll contact the EST, we'll set a meeting, we'll bring in parents. We review the data, progress, and we determine if intervention is needed. If it is, we set up the intervention, we progress monitor, we review it, we evaluate it, we look and see if there are next steps that we need to do, and if that's it, then we just repeat the process. If not, teachers will look at what supports they had provided in their classroom and potentially other like areas that they could look for support in. So, just from the faculty side of it, from our. I think there's a lot that we do with it, and it pretty much drives all aspects of our day.
So, moving down as first, look at someone, we also use a really strong EST process, looking at all of this data. And have a conversation, look at the trend, so. I think having a really meeting has been such a good thing to keep academic. For the, yeah. I think it's a great process to develop, we're still finding, I think it's good. Also, I think conversation, like universal practices to majorably provide non-students best, you know, the school advantages. Going from layer to charater. Whatever key gaps.
And we will actually also be using this data for our summer school instruction. So that it'll be really individualized, the kids are going to be attending summer school. Just because it's easy to access and it gives them, it gives us exactly what they need, really easily.
This is. Trying to figure, he said this is, this is how, this is based off of ESS?
So like, when they take their fast bridge testing, when they need fast. We take the results of their tests, so we do it in the fall, we do it in winter, we do it again when they do their testing in spring. And we take a bold back, we need to look at it, and we see growth, we see areas, sometimes kids will stand out, students will stand out where you can look at their, we look at progress over the years too. So you can look and see, are they just on a platform, and so then we really need to look at that and say, why is that, what are we going to be able to improve that, how do we provide services to them? It's, for me, it's been a phenomenal process because I think teachers feel like they are really supported for every student in the group. I think the interventionist is utilized in a way that I know R E S T wouldn't run the way that it done, and our supports wouldn't happen, we didn't have an ever that benjumist position that we do. I was a special educator, and I know that we used to call it dumb dipping. You could, where you couldn't have students get services from a special educator if they didn't have an IEP. And that kind of has, if a child needs to be part of the group, that the special educator's seeing as long as they're following the IEP. And we can maybe split them in, or they have an extra little bit of time. They'll actually be able to utilize that service as well. But I feel it all comes from the data. I think, like, it really does. I mean, it's invaluable to what's happening to students. And even if you look at, are they on a grade level? Maybe not, but have they made their growth? Absolutely, absolutely. So they're really kind of filling in those gaps from COVID and. It's a great tool for us to give to that.
Yeah, so we had the MTS, we had less presentation last week, but I thought it was, I thought it was great at ESS. I actually learned a few things. Really kind of played out how, how involved the school. How does, when we look at the, like, the math status, you know, how, how does it, what does it mean? Are we seeing, because we're seeing like a lot of, like, no growth or lack of growth in that data? You know, is there? Yeah, I mean, like, so, is there changes in how, you know, like, MTSSS is done at the school when stuff like that happens? Or is it just remaining the same?
So I think if you look at this graph, what you, what teacher looking at in your class, whether you have a fast grid or the F3 group. So teachers will look for trends. Now, in school, we look at trends. And then they determine whether they hold for, for start with graduate process, take a look at. Little to no growth, homework course of say a standard or an area, they'll go back and they'll look at units or like lessons, or get what they've done, and say, okay, maybe there's shit that needs to be made. Seeing like a pocket, so if there goes, students or groups of students, so they'll look at, you know. Like I said, go back to less, less design, look at whether the multiple endpoints were, you know, was differentiated, there's a lot of questions that are asked. So it's not just, the MTSSS system is really, it's just a data cycle, that you should be engaging on a daily basis, a weekly basis, you know, with maths, you know, and three times a year. And so, you know, there are these discussions that are across the, as you were asking, our industry to have staff around, trying to see, and then once, one of the, what would you pay, wouldn't be honest, lessons become more wholesale for us?
Hi, Alice. I'm Matt.
Alright, that came beautifully. Okay, yeah, that kind of helped a little. Did anyone else have any questions in regards to the the testing data?
I also think, just to add, that, that fast version occurs in Cogniun 2, they're all three points, points to look at, points to time, but also goes back into the conversation, alright, so when are we having evidence, some new one day? Shows, really has given them that, that conversation, alright, so we'll just show this, but there's still more, it's different evidence, and also one of some things that, that could be affecting. So it is that rich conversation about each system. Yeah, one thing I'll add to the conversations. Teachers, I think I turned it over very hard, and I think sometimes we're looking through, we see little, no growth, or thousand of growth, and first thing you can take a look at is, if everybody sees the Cogniun, or Midcap, which is what's called Web 1000. Each of the questions are graduated, so level one, level two, level three, level four. The only thing we can find is that students are being assessed at say a level three or a level four. Or really go back and look at our, you know, our individual lesson with classroom or across a grade band, you might find that the lesson they're really being asked in a level one or level two, so we're trying to break out and cover that, but it's at a level one or a level two. Question, the one that goes on, the assessment's at a level three, level four, so we have to do a better job of understanding the, you know, the levels that are being asked at, so. The questions we ask in level three, we want to see the replicability in our classrooms at a level three as well. So it sounds like a, I'm talking, but sometimes it just causes me to assess whether they all have Cogniun or math, that those are conversations that we started at. With our staff this year is just around this 100 levels, you know, making sure that we are, they're assessing and we're prudent. Correlation to our assessments, we had this opportunity on math, fast bridge as well, and this, now we can cover.
It does. Have to remind myself that maps is just one, one piece.
So I bring it up just like, if they see a score, you know, I have to say thumbs up, thumbs down, or okay, there's a lot. You know, on a map, this is just say thumbs up, thumbs down, or okay, there's a lot to that. Pre-strictly obvious, why you're seeing these scores must really occur. And sometimes it is apparent, you're doing a great job. So, but it's sometimes it's more nuanced and sophisticated than that. That's where, said Rip and Carol and other industries are really starting to do conversations around.
Good, any questions? All right, so move on to new business, community engagement, invitation to application. So at our last meeting. Tasked the community engagement committee. Looking to expand to come up with a letter and an application everyone should have. There should be a new verdict for this stuff I have today too, so Amanda.
Yeah. Hi, guys. So I had Christine send out the updated flyer and applications this afternoon. So the applications, there's two there, one is bulleted and one is numbered. We decided on Monday that we wanted to look at both options to see what we thought looked best. So tonight we will just need to decide if we like the numbers or if we like the bullets. If we approve the questions that are being asked on the application, if we like the way the flyer looks. And then something that I thought of this afternoon that we did not discuss in community engagement that we should cover now is. When we discussed adding to the committee, it was to include three board members and then two community members, one from Middletown and one from Wells. So what we did not discuss is if we send out these applications. And we get them back and we only get people from Wells or people from Middletown applying, how do we handle that? I'm not sure that that's going to happen. I would hope that we have people apply from both towns. But if we only have applicants from one town, are we opposed? To taking two members from one town without an applicant from the opposite town? So that's the only thing that we didn't decide, but that's where we're at, so. Meredith?
Uh, my other question about if. They are parents of the, in the separate towns or in separate schools?
Yeah, so it would be, it would be members of the town. Um, so and on the application on the top, it says, does your child attend one of our schools? And if so, which school? Um, but then above that is the address, the physical address and mailing address. So that would give us the answer of if, you know, they live in Wells and have a child in Middletown or live in Middletown and have a child in Wells.
Right, I guess my question is, what would the decision be on that though?
I think it would be the town that they reside in. Um, but I guess we didn't discuss that either.
Yeah, I, I wonder about having parents in each of the schools would be a lot more beneficial than. But I know that it, it isn't necessarily parents that are involved.
Yeah, that's definitely, definitely something we can think about and add to. To the process. Um, and, and I'm hoping that we get a lot of applicants, honestly. So I would hope that we have plenty of applications to go through. And then when we have those, we would then come back again and decide. Um, on the two members. So at that time, we could, we could further the discussion and pick the best two applicants. That may be the best way to handle that.
Yeah, I think in regards to, uh. Like who, uh, you know, in regard, in terms of community engagement. It should be anyone within the community. Um, I think that was something that. Officially, that is first start talking about it. It's narrowed down to, um, you know. Whether it be a parent or a teacher, or it, it could be excluding others, you know. But, uh. So. We, we, uh. If by chance there were only applicants from one town. Obviously, it wouldn't make sense to. Only pick one person just because, you know, I did it. Board and the committee is looking for two more participants then. That is, that's just my thought on that.
The other piece that isn't covered that I forgot to mention is where the applications will be found. Um, so we talked about putting applications in each school, Middletown and Wells. Putting them at the local stores, putting them at the post offices and putting them on the website. So that, that's really the best way, and also Front Porch Forum. Uh, we wanted to put the flyer on the Front Porch Forum as well. So we felt that was really the best way to get everybody so that we didn't miss anybody. But if anyone has any ideas of other places that it should be or other places the flyer should be. Um, we just really want to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to apply as well. And then I guess we would just be looking for approval to get that flyer and application out. Um, so that we could hopefully have them back by June, so have a full like six weeks. To have them out and circling and then have them back for review for June.
That, that was my next question, why June 15th? Want it out long enough?
Well, we, we did June 15th, I think, because. If changes needed to be made tonight, we needed time to make those changes and bring them back. That was the first reason. And the second reason was we really wanted to make sure that there was enough opportunity for everybody to apply. And April break is coming up, and then that's the month of May, and then our next meeting is June. So we, we really just wanted to allow people enough time and also leave room for changes if necessary.
Well, I don't necessarily think, I think you guys did a fantastic job on all those. Any, any changes to these, you know, the board could amend them and tonight, so it's not like. You have to go back to the drawing board and come back in a month. So, um. Just one, one minor change, Amanda, on the list of expectations. On the flyer, it still says commit to all team meetings. Want to remove that all out there, just. Try to not fog, you know, to stay on vacation.
Yeah, I think it's just the one that got attached, George. I did change it on my end. Um, I think just the wrong one got attached to the email, but I did say. We changed that wording to like, to commit to team meetings and took out that all. But I'll definitely double check and make sure that's, that's all set before we post anything.
Turn it out when you have set up. Okay. Yeah, I understand. Thank you. So, thank you.
This, this is a new one, right?
I printed out what you get attached to the email after our meeting. So I guess since then, she's taken it.
Well, I think this is what came in material.
The material, yeah. Material for this meeting is, is all.
It got changed in the application on the most recent email, but it looks like the flyer with the bulleted points still has all. But all was removed from the application. That was in the email today.
Okay, I'll double check that. Possibly it was just the wrong flyer, but I'll definitely double check that. And then on the applications, do you guys think the numbers or the bullets should be used? Bullets? Do you feel like any questions should be added or removed, or are we comfortable with everything the way it is?
I don't see any issues with this, honestly. I think, I think it all looks pretty good.
Okay, so I guess then Eric, if, if everyone agrees, I can extend it to you tomorrow and we can, I can have you. Get it on Front Porch Forum and then we can make sure that we have the copies to post and start the process.
Yeah, um. I think, uh. Because it goes to. Some of the, I can speak for motion. That this, uh. The only thing I was looking for. I guess it doesn't. Will be, I guess, like, uh. Like some sort of timeline. In regards to like how the application.
Like the process after the application is received?
Yeah, so like, you know, um. Then, you know, because it's going to come back to the board.
Right.
The board will pick, choose.
Yeah, so we didn't, we didn't really put a timeline, but we just put the process that it would be reviewed. It's kind of at the bottom, that last paragraph in the application there. Um, but we didn't give a specific timeline. We can add that if you guys want that added. That's no problem. But I, I, I was kind of afraid to give too much of a timeline as well because. Depending on when we have everything by the 15th, it, it may be something that's a super quick turnaround. We have an answer, although we just decided we weren't having a July meeting. So now that puts us into August for deciding. These applications without a July meeting, I guess, so, um.
Yeah, no, it's, it's fine, because if you put it in there, then it's kind of set stone.
Okay.
I think it's funny, it was just something I was thinking about. But that's reasonable, that we'll decide in August.
If needed, we could also always call a special, special meeting to review applications if we end up with a bunch and July's there. Right? We could do that quickly. Potentially.
I guess it really depends if people want to break from board stuff or not, but.
Okay.
I would say if, if you have any issues with waiting until August. You could try and get applications for the June.
Right.
But that's.
Okay.
But.
So, so should we then change the, the June 15th date then? So instead of it being June 15th, should we make it June 5th so that we have it by the June meeting? We kind of just came up with June 15th. There's no real reason that it has to be the 15th. June 5th would get us applications back for our June meeting.
Yes, um, well, maybe. Okay, I mean, now if you wanted to do the, like I said, it, it really depends. Um, there's a lot of stuff up in the air. Uh, if, if almost don't want to meet in July or have a, a special meeting or. You know, I, I think August would be fine, if it really gives that time. Or is the. Community engagement committee going to be eating over the summer as well? I think that's another question we have to think about, so, um.
I mean, if we did, if we do meet. Community engagement committee, if the board wants to give us copies of any applications and just the. The okay and review, they're not going to make any decisions, of course, but just to go through them and. Maybe let you know. Does that make sense?
Yeah, um. Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's for that, though. On the, on board, the board, so. Okay. All right, so, all right, so is everyone comfortable with the application and newsletter? Not really hearing any opposition to it, I think. All right, so here, no opposition, we can approve this right then. All right, so we'll move on to, uh. Yeah.
There, there was another item at the community engagement meeting, which was board meeting recap. So we talked about this previous meetings. Um, essentially the idea is that be the bridged version. Uh, what transpired during the board meeting, this board meeting. Um, and we'd send it out to Front Porch Forum, the newspaper, middle class practice newsletter. Um, and so the idea that we're getting around, uh, Monday. Was that the community engagement team, uh, board members on the, on that, uh, would rotate duties to, um. Wrap that short messaging. And that, um. We meet reviews, since that community engagement meeting happens just before this meeting. We meet to review that person's notes. And providing there is, uh, no other edits, if you got it, it's good, good shape, we post it. For Tuesday. So essentially, to give you, uh, an example. Uh, we would be working with, um, unapproved minutes. And we would be, we would, we wouldn't necessarily be getting into the details. Um, there'd be other board members that review those, that, that messaging. But essentially, for example, tonight, we could have had, uh, a recap of last month, last meeting go out yesterday. Uh, with a link to the actual place where meeting notes, uh, meeting minutes are. But also to encourage folks to even, you know, throw in this meeting. So.
Yeah, so I think to better explain what Matt is saying. Um, George had mentioned before about getting an abridged version of the minutes posted. And the abridged version really isn't an option. We really can't have two sets of minutes. So what was discussed was highlights. So basically it would be the agenda and then under each agenda item, just one bullet. Like, okay, this is what they talked about for new business, check. This is what they talked about for the application, check. Like very, very basic information, just highlights. That can be posted with a link to our next meeting and a link to our full minutes. So that there's still information posted, but not necessarily minutes posted, just links with very brief highlights. Um, and so those would be posted if, if we decided we want to do this. Community engagement would do that and then post them on Front Porch Forum and then, um, the Middletown newsletter and the. The Lakeside News, George. Yeah, so I guess really then what community engagement committee was looking for was permission to do those highlighted. Notes and post them in those areas with links to our full minutes and our board meetings.
We, we would basically just, if we don't want to add any word of staff, we can basically pull the header of each item. And maybe add a note what actually was paid. Uh, it was approved, disapproved, it was tabled, something like that. But again, the important thing is to have a link to the full minutes, have a link to the agenda for the next. So if this beat somebody in, somebody's in here, they know where to go.
Middletown Springs would post this, the newsletter, Lakeside would do this.
I think it's just making very clear that these minutes, I think you just take a little bit of format, I think it follows already the agenda, keep it a process, I think, we format to use the guidelines, but I, I think that's a good idea.
It would be bold highlights, or something like that, would it be the bold minutes? Yeah. Would it be all right if, for example, we did go bold by bullet on the agenda, just the highlighters, the key topics, not including the whole thing?
Yeah, I think the only highlight term is if you just went through, took the kind of times agenda, this is kind of old, like here, the highlights, we see that, and it's just stopping the minutes, I think that would be great, just like here, just some highlights. Highlights that you should know about, to get all their concern, everything, which ones will drive, people each, the official minutes, what's going on.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, if it looks too close, it tends to be the issue, but I, you know, in regards to bringing out to other community members. So I guess the. If the board is okay with the Community Engagement Committee doing additional work of creating highlights, that's essentially what they're looking for, Amanda?
I was just going to add that this would only be for these meetings, it would not be for our committee meetings, and we are also not opposed to any of the other members doing the highlighting, we just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that we were available and willing to do them, but that doesn't mean if anyone else wanted to do the highlighting that they would not be allowed, we will take any and all help, but we are also available to do it if nobody wants to help.
Okay. Amanda, that question, would it be beneficial for us to come and put a sample for the next board meeting, here's what we're talking about, does that make sense?
We can totally do that if everyone wants us to do that, I think we could highlight tonight's meeting and, and come with a sample for next month, I think that's fine, and, and as we're doing this and talking about it, I think what we should be doing is taking our own notes as well, I mean, we all take our own notes while we're here, but specific highlights, if we highlight as we go, then that would make it easier for the three of us to approve at the following time, I think, but I, I'm not opposed to bringing a sample next month and then everyone can let us know what they think, if that's what we decide is best, that's fine with me.
I think that'd be good, let's do that. There's an agenda item.
Good job, George.
Make sure you like this part, too. All right, all right, so we'll move on to facility, summer projects approval. So we have, like I mentioned at our previous meeting, there are some substantial projects that need to happen this summer, or potentially happening this summer, and from what I understand, well, the board needs to approve the use of capital maintenance funds. Do you have any? To that at all, or?
I, I think the two things that we would can for our fire alarm system, and Scott at Orange email had just said, Countryside, said they could do the alarm work in two phases, first phase will be twenty-one thousand nine fifty dollars, the second phase will be fifteen nine seventy-seven, eight years later, just to be able to spread it out, but the initial one could be twenty-one thousand.
There's the alarm system.
So, it, it's been really not functioning the way it should for years, but it's got to a point where, like, if it's windy out, it will go off, and, and Scott made a call and there was, you know, it's the phone lines, and actually, the last time he called, one of the codes, they said, we don't even know what that means, like, they weren't sure what their phone was coming up, so it has just been. Been a mess for a lot of, but that was the phone they had.
Yeah, so, you know, with the, with the alarm system, it's extremely out of date, and it's not even up to recent compliance as well, from what I understand on the quote by Countryside Alarm, to add to that, with it randomly going off for no reason, our facilities manager looked into it and really, it's just so out of date that there's no way to really diagnose it from what you were saying, so this is a pretty substantial cost and. So I think it's about thirty-seven thousand for the alarm, and then the other piece to this is, to the front of the building, it has a lot of structural rot, all this like what I had at our last meeting, and so, and I guess this is where, I guess Lewis comes in, where my understanding is that the board would need to approve this to use capital maintenance funds, correct?
That is correct.
And that doesn't matter because we're still in FY twenty-three, right?
So the year, I mean, for capital maintenance reserve funds, the year doesn't matter, it can cross years, there's really no year pertaining to them because they're just rollover type funds.
Okay, yeah, and really quickly, Scott is trying to plan out new projects so that he can make sure that, obviously, these are summer projects, they need to be done with students are at the school, and so the, the concern is, is that lining up the companies and the contractors to get the work done, so tonight, you'd be looking for approval for these projects to use the capital maintenance fund, I guess the other question is, if the board would like to just split the alarm into the twenty-one thousand nine fifty and then a year or two down the road, upgrade the rest of it for the seventeen change, or just do it as one whole expense, I think that's pretty much.
So I do have those balances up in, in front of me, so, which could probably help you make a better decision, so Wells, Wells School has fifteen thousand dollars in a reserve fund, that was from pre-merger, and then Wells Springs has thirty-five thousand plus the hundred and twenty-five that the taxpayers just approved, so for a total of one sixty.
Amanda?
How would these projects interfere with summer programming, could we do these right at the end of the school year before summer programming starts, if they have to be done without students in the building, or can we do them at other times of the day, or?
I don't know, I think that would be a good question to swap.
God.
But we need, need to get on the contractors. First, exactly, the question tonight is. I think the board wants to approve the use of capital maintenance funds for these projects, and these are the two significant ones, I don't know, yeah, these are just the two significant ones.
Do we have a quote for the rot on the front fascia of the building, is that?
Twenty thousand.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that.
Yeah, I have it in mind. And, and that's the estimate that he got, so I mean, that could change, but. I think the sooner, the sooner the projects are lined up, the better. Amanda?
I would make a motion to start both projects, I think that in that we should use the fifteen thousand first and then move into the combined money, so that all of the money that is left ends up being shared money, is that an option, Louis, to?
Yes, that would be my recommendation as well.
Yeah, I would, I would make a motion to do that, but I would just want to see that that fifteen thousand is used first before the shared funds, and hopefully it can, we can get on their schedule before summer programming starts, if we try it sooner rather than later.
And Amanda, are you suggesting doing both parts of the alarm and the front of the building, or just?
Yeah, yeah, I think both parts and the front of the building, I think if we wait, the cost is just going to go up like everything else, so I think we should just do it now.
Okay. All right, so, I'm excited, Amanda, to approve the summer projects to use fifteen thousand pre-merger capital maintenance fund first and to, to both projects. Any other discussion?
I would support this, just generally because if we have to, like, worst case scenario, we might have to not have school, summer programming at the school while these projects are done for a week, I don't want to run into that same problem in a year or two years, like, if we're going to do it, let's do it all, we have the money right now, let's fix it. My one question is, do we have a complimentary list of big projects for the Middletown School that's going to be talked about next, or?
I think, but Middletown Springs is generally in pretty good shape, we spent thirty thousand last summer to do in front of Middletown Springs.
Great, I just, I didn't want to, like, approve all this money and then the next thing coming up was going to be like, and we need to spend a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on this, so I just, thank you.
It happens. I think Middletown's in pretty good shape, we are updating the heating system, trying to find out how it's installed, there's things that are lacking, which has created issues with like freezing up coils, so we're trying to address that, which goes back and something possibly run into this year, so. But we're, we're in pretty good shape, I think, we can use some painting on the other half of the front, but I think Wells, but these half of Wells really needs to be fixed first, so. We're also talking about having a new assessment done for facilities, discussing that, to look down the road and everything, so we can plan for it. Okay, all right, so if another discussion, all of us in favor, say aye, Amanda?
Aye.
There is, okay, teacher appreciation, it's. But the last few years, boys, that's our teacher appreciation, I don't know if the board feels about continuing that, don't see why we would just stop now, thoughts? Amanda?
Um, I, I kind of looked at what we did last year and other previous years, and this year I was thinking, if we use the same website, which is New Penn, and potentially we got like coffee mugs, there's some stainless steel options, the two that I looked at, one was a less expensive option, which would be about two hundred and fifty dollars for fifty mugs, and I, if Rick and Carol could confirm, I think in the past we've always done fifty, and then the other option was a, a little larger mug that was twenty-two ounces instead of sixteen, and that was going to be like four hundred and fifty dollars, and I was thinking with that, if everyone got like a ten dollar Dunkin' gift card inside the mug, that might be a nice little addition, they could grab something on the way to work or at another time, last year we spent about eight hundred dollars, the year before we spent about seven, I don't know how much we want to spend this year, but that's just what I put together for thoughts of my own so far to get us started, I do have pictures of both of the cups that I kind of made and a letter, but that's, that's all I have to start, that's.
Same thing happened last year, as far as, but with the teacher appreciation being the first week in May, I guess if we want to do something like we did last year, just have, you know, just like another little ad hoc meeting, something, but I don't know, in, in regards to this time, I mean, it might be faster just to have, you know, two, three, four members to work on this, if they have the time.
There is twenty percent off available until midnight tonight on those mugs, I have no problem placing the order if Lewis and Chris want to reimburse me, but there is twenty percent off until midnight tonight, if we decide we want to do the mugs, I can try to email a picture of what I came up with, they're just black and, and silver.
And if I don't handle rehearsals, that's, you have to talk to him.
He just left us, man.
That's why I'm not.
Get him back.
Yeah, you know, it's time, he's like, oh, great, we're going to be talking about a hundred and fifty seconds. And he needs that pretty careful on what he sees in the past, that they.
Amanda, my thought, like, funny answer, but it's, a mug is kind of a standard, if you went to any teacher, they might have a covered phone, I'm just saying, that's just personal observation.
Can you, I'm sorry, you're really echoing, Carol, can you repeat that?
I'm just saying, as a boarder teacher, a mug is a standard gift, and if you have a teacher open their cup birthday, probably have a covered phone up there.
I, I hear you, and I don't disagree. I just find that when we're dealing with men and women, we've already given everybody a tote bag, and we've already given everybody pens, and we've already made donations, I just felt like a mug was the only thing we hadn't bought yet. But I'm open to ideas, do you think, and we also don't have a lot of money to work with, so absolutely, like.
Talking about like a ten dollar Dunkin' gift card, teachers spend a lot of their money on spending and buying supplies for their group, like maybe an Amazon gift card, you might think that that's not a lot, but. They're going to, they would be able to do something, I don't know, do you have a different idea?
So I, I certainly appreciate the love, but I think, if the Amazon gift card is not bad.
I'm not opposed to a gift card and like a physical card from us thanking them, I, I guess we've always kind of thought of like tangible items, right, like something they can touch and take, but I'm not opposed to making that, you know, like a twenty dollar gift card or twenty-five dollar gifts card to everybody instead, or whatever we decide on an amount.
Well, maybe let's just figure out like, what's five about? How much? How much the board's willing to, to spend on it, you know, I know we could get crazy really quick, so, doesn't take much, I mean, by the time you. doesn't take much, I mean, by the time you do all that and shipping. So, thoughts about?
I would suggest if we're not doing a physical gift to go along with it, that they might be fifteen dollars. I mean, not an emotion, but just a session. And the, I mean, if it's Amazon, that's fine. I love Amazon. But also, we want to encourage teachers to spend it on themselves, not just reinvest it in their classrooms. So I would lean more towards the Dunkin' donuts that they would use on themselves and not their students. Not that their students don't deserve it, but.
Alright, why, and then to like, like a maximum amount the board would want to suspend.
The number, the number of spending, the number of staff.
I mean, fi- fifty, fifteen dollar gift cards would be seven hundred and fifty, which is fifty dollars less than we spent last year.
Okay. Okay. How do people feel about eight hundred? Amanda, see your hand up.
I was just going to add that another idea that I had heard from another teacher when, when we started talking about something that's not tangible is like a frozen dinner, like a pot pie or dessert pie. I heard from another teacher in a different district that they all got frozen like pot pies one year, and that was great because then after like conferences and a long day, they just came home and had something to throw in the oven. And they really liked that. So that's also something that they would use that they wouldn't put back in their classroom. I feel like even fifteen dollars, we could get something like that for fifteen or less if we, if we went to like Max or Williams and Dorset. I think if we did a bulk, we could work something out like that. And I just don't know if fifty is the right number then, if we then change it. We were kind of doing fifty, I think, because they came in increments of twenty-five. But possibly find that it's a different number.
Okay, well, I like the idea of getting cards, I guess. If we're just doing like, I think, I think gift cards and like a letter. You know, that can be addressed to all the teachers and staff. I think that would be acceptable for teacher appreciation. Like I said, we can get crazy really quick. So, alright, any other thoughts on this?
I'll just throw out the Wells country store. I wonder, maybe this, I don't know if they're up and running yet under the leadership, but could be a gift card there. I wonder if they do like.
Yeah, Julie does gift cards to the store.
Like any amount?
Yeah, she'll do any amount. I've gotten them from her before, but I also don't know. They are still for sale, so I don't know.
I don't think she's giving, they may not be giving out gift cards, because I know they're asking for people to use up their gift cards. So I'd, I'd be surprised if they're gonna give out new ones.
Okay. Alright, so maybe gift cards. I haven't heard fifty, fifty dollars is not reasonable, I guess. Amazon cards or Dunkin' cards, whatever. What do people think here?
This might be a Louis question, but what if we gave, like, Visa gift cards, so it's just money and they get to choose where to spend it. And other organizations I've worked with, they've been able to get those through the bank that they work with, directly issued so that we don't have to go to like a third-party retailer to get them. We've just been able to get them directly from the bank. But I don't know if all banks do that.
Alright, any other discussion? Alright, so it sounds like everyone's
Gift cards are not taxable as long as they're under five hundred dollars, correct? We're not asking our staff to then pay taxes on this gift, right?
Alright. So I heard George earlier suggested eight hundred total. And they weren't opposed to that. Uh, number two, spend. Very great. Then the other matter we need the weather, that I want to send out. Guess if we could use the same one from last year or maybe the Kaden Gaming Committee wants to draft something, I don't know, just want to stuff out here. We'll do that. Either yes, since we don't have anything, either either I can draft something or I can use last year's or, and then just bring it to the next board meeting. I just don't have the mind to do this here, but so I'd like to move on. Alright, any other discussion? Cool, alright. Alright, so we're gonna move on to policy. Jump around here. Looking at the first reads first. So the, kind of have a big process with the supervisory union, all the policies that go to committee, go to supervisory union first. And then those are essentially approved by the supervisory union board, and then they go out to union board, first reads. So these were basically reviewed last week, so, and they are just first reads. So if you have any questions, our feedback on these policies, now would be kind of just time to bring it up. And moving on to our policies. If you look at the driver's education policy of free, the changes we discussed are in there in red. And if that looks good to everyone. We could, we can actually make them, we can have a motion to basically warrant this for adoption. And then at our next meeting, we would adopt it.
I'll make that motion if nobody else has.
Okay, first by Cara. War for adoption. Any discussion on it? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then our school choice policy. So one that went out of the packet, another one came out today. It's quite different, you know, just kind of working on language that kind of reflects what we talked about at our last meeting. Did anyone have any questions, comments, suggestions on the school choice policy? Been, the application is different to it. Significantly different. I think, if anything on this policy, there'd be some good discussion around. When you look at number one, under implementation, like for example, these, you know, the amount of spots limited by the board. So if we're talking about having limited spots available for school choice, which would be, for example, you know, students transferring, yeah, transferring in or transferring out. And that's kind of revolved around where there's language in this about having a warrant. So, hey. So it looks okay, I think.
Is this policy silent on, like, this just covers beginning of the year transfers? Like, any mid-year transfers would be as a result of a direct appeal to the superintendent for exemption to this policy? Because we talked about having exemptions for behavior, for like, there are reasons to change. But like, unless a family moves into town mid-year, this would be the school choice policy and school choice transfers only happen at the start of a new year, right?
The way the timeline is written, they would have to, and this is just like students that want to go from Wells and go to Middletown or Middletown to Wells, so you know, with the timeline, they would have to apply. And it would be to start the following school year. So, you know, with the way it's intended, it's the timeline, and this goes back to when we first talked about it back in two thousand nineteen, was in, in terms of, you know, preparing for the students that are coming in for the following year. You know, because there's a lot of things that administration has taken into consideration. So I would say that once the deadline has passed, that, you know, no other application could be really considered, but that's, you know, it's a bit vague, you know.
I, I agree with the policy as written. I just wanted to make sure that my understanding is that generally, absent a concern that is brought through due process channels through the superintendent's office, this is the policy for transferring between the schools. Because we talked about last meeting that there are situations in which exemptions are made, but that is on a very case-by-case process.
Yeah, a very specific process. Yes, correct. And so, you know, what we can do is just get like, I think with, with the timing, it came out, you know, this afternoon. We can, we can bring it back for, if you haven't had time to review it and and have a little bit longer discussion on it if needed. That sounds alright to everyone.
Just generally, I really like the changes. I think it simplifies it in a way that the last version was a little bit convoluted in a way. I didn't, I don't think it needs to be. I really like this revision.
I guess I would ask, you know, what do you think about having as a the way, the way I wrote it was amount of spots available for school choice. And it's in the policy that we have limited spots available that the board would need to make that determination. And if so, are we gonna make that determination policy so that that number will stay the same? Or is that something that we determine once a year? I think those are questions that would kind of clarify it a little bit more as well. And if, you know, just go by the, the list of other criteria over here. Lots may not even be a factor when you think about class size, space available and all the other determining factors that are in it. So, that's, that's something that I think we should think about. I would say too, that, I don't think you can allow, you don't have spots, you know, limited spots, and you can still end up with a, with a waiting list too, just by that determination of what's going to be the rules and stuff like that. Anyway. Yeah, I, I think it looks a lot better than what we currently have in place. Alright, any other discussion on policy? Sounds good. Alright, so we just have to have a executive session about the contract question really quick. Before we do the, our next meeting, debate, and I just want to kind of address the outdoor schoolhouse. So, you know, that, that will be on the agenda. But, you know, I just wanted to let everyone know that it's not on the agenda because like I mentioned earlier, the board requested certain information in regards to the outdoor schoolhouse that we talked about at a previous meeting, had not received any of that information to present for, so that's why it's not an agenda item. And so if we don't have the information to discuss, then that's where we're at on that. So, I, I think it, you know, we'll still be doing it forward with it, but in regards to the next agenda items,
Can I say that this was on the truth this month's agenda? And then they didn't show or couldn't put deliver on, on the items we had asked for, which doesn't make them that big. There seems to be a perception out there that we're against this. That's not the case. We just want to do this the right way.
Yeah, and, you know, here's, here's what I would like to, you know, before we, we, it comes back to board, need to see this material too. Because if it's not what the board asked, then then once I'm at the cap of this, I don't have another conversation, there's still this information. So, you know, but, you know, I continue to work with, you know, the, like, actually, you know, very bad, they've been emailing me about this and you know, I, I think, you know, it's definitely something that I should see through. So, but having said that, let's, is there a motion to move an executive session for contracts?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, a motion by Cara. Principals and for those here Principals and for those here in public, we will come back to this link. Um, and uh, adjourn, so we'll move into the executive session at eight to eleven. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Try to executive session at eight twenty, uh, by consensus, uh, so looking for a motion to approve the. Support staff, um. By twenty one, not targeting units, support staff, uh, recommendations, and then. This is just the support staff. Don't make a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are you guys in favor?
Yeah.
All vote in favor.
Man, I didn't hear you.
Yes, sorry, I wasn't heard, I said.
Okay, all right, and then for, whatever you guys want to handle, the uh, special staff, vigilante, um. Let's uh, uh, let's do this, uh. I think that's the guy. So uh. Everything was really extreme and vigilante. Yeah, I was. I haven't had this in public, man. Yes, I know, I was thinking in. Giving professional staff, is there a motion for professional staff, like twenty four rehires, um, for uh. Patricia Swainy and Carol Tyre. I'm making a motion to that. All those in favor, aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, and then uh. For Mary Ellen Jacobs, um. For a professional staff, one year contract, um. Motion would be in order. Okay, uh. So I, you know what? Is that, I'll make a motion to approve, your fourteen year contract with Mary Ellen Jacobs. All those in favor of approving her contract, to divide, I'm saying yes. Okay. All right, we'll do, we'll do a global call, uh. George?
For the conversion of Meredith Nation.
Okay. Uh, Amanda?
Um. Let's see, no.
Okay. Uh, let's see, Meredith?
Yes, based on the recommendation, southern principals.
Okay, Cara?
Yes, based on the recommendation from the principals.
Amanda?
No.
Okay. Yes, this has it, uh, breathing too. All right, motion carries, um, to everyone, all right, uh. Remembered the future meeting dates, so no other business, uh, motion to adjourn, do you? Uh, we did that, we did that. Uh, motion to adjourn at eight twenty six will be in order.
I'll make that.
Uh, motion by Cara, uh, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
But Gary, good night, everyone, thank you.